Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So the hour of 6:00 PM having come and gone, we'd like to call the regular meeting of the City Council to order 6:15. Madam Clerk, can you please call a row?
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Gardner.
Here.
Patton.
Here.
Smith.
Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
We declare the United States of America to the Lord with his hands, on your nation, under God, in the visible, with liberty and justice for all.
And for the record, Alderman Navarrete is in the room. At this time, we'd like to call up Pastor Corlin Stokes to start us off with a prayer. Pastor Stokes?
Good evening. Let us pray. Our God and Father, we thank you tonight for this opportunity to come and to share and to give you glory and honor. We thank you tonight for our honored guest, Ms. Yula Lofton, whose presence reminds us of the blessings of life that we enjoy. And we thank you that she is here as a witness tonight to show each of us in this room that you are certainly good all the days of our life. We ask that you would look on our mayor tonight, the men and women in this room who lead this city and make decisions to move Calumet City forward. We thank you tonight for these public servants, the fire department, the police department, and all in this room who collaborate and work together for the good of the city. Your word declares to us that we should trust you with all of our heart, lean not to our own understanding, and in all of our ways acknowledge you, and you would direct our path. So we give you the praise and honor in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. At this time in the agenda, I would like to request a motion to deviate from the agenda to take up Resolutions 1 and 3.
So move.
Second. Motion made by Alderman Williams, second by Alderman Tillman. All in favor?
Aye.
So tonight, we are honored by the presence of Yula Lofton. She is here as a Calumet City resident. So I would like to entertain the motion to have Resolution 3 read in its entirety.
So move.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Williams. All in favor?
Aye.
Madam Clerk, could you please read Resolution 3?
A resolution expressing the City of Calumet City's recognition of Yula Bell Lofton's 100-year birthday celebration. Whereas Yula Bell Lofton was born on May 16, 1922, in Chicago, Illinois, to the parents of Elise Bell Whitman and Charles Henry Jones. Yula was the oldest of three children. Yula was raised in Chicago and attended Chicago Public Schools on the south side of Chicago. Yula went to Dusavo High School, where she graduated with honors. She went on to finish her education at Chicago State University, where she studied nursing. After college, Yula began working as an emergency room nurse. She worked at Michael Reese Hospital. While working at Michael Reese, Yula met her first husband and was married to Milton Flanagan for 12 years. They did not have any children together. After her divorce to Milton, she moved to Detroit, Michigan, to live with her brother Wayman for five years. Whereas Yula then left Detroit and moved back to Chicago to live with her mother, Elise Bell. After returning to Chicago, Yula began working at Providence Hospital as an emergency room nurse. It was during those years while working at Providence that she never settled, that she moved off to... Yula and her husband Willie moved to Chicago Heights, Illinois, where Yula continued working at Providence Hospital as an emergency room nurse. Her husband Willie became a minister and had a small missionary Baptist church in Chicago Heights, Illinois, where he also had a broadcast church radio station. Willie Lofton was well-known in the community and was well-liked by everyone that knew him. Whereas after Willie Lofton's passing, Yula joined St. James ME Church Missionary Society in Chicago Heights, Illinois, where she worked with the ministry for over 12 years. Yula joined Covenant United Church of Christ in South Holland, Illinois. Yula has been a member since December 29 of 2001. She has been very involved in different ministries: Women's Fellowship, Savvy Seniors, Reverend Ozzy Noon Bible Class, and Sunday School. Yula was very active at Covenant United Church of Christ, and her health started to fail. Yula moved to Dalton, Illinois, where she remained for several years before moving into Victory Center. Whereas Yula currently resides at Victory Center supportive living and senior apartments. On the 16th May 2022, Yula have reached a milestone and will turn 100 years young. She will have lived a lifetime by age standards. Whereas Yula's nephew, William Bernard Turner, regularly visits Yula and takes her out on occasions to the store and out to eat. Yula is enjoying her life there at Victory Center and takes each day, one day at a time, as it comes. Now therefore, it be resolved that the mayor and the City Council of the City of the Calumet City expresses their sincere gratitude to... Oh, this is... To Yula and her... Yula Bell Lofton and her 100-year birthday celebration.
Thank you. Let's give Yula a round of applause. I would... I don't know if Yvette from Victory Center, if you want to say something, or if we have friends and family want to come to the mic and say something. Yula has promised us she's going to get the mic and not say any interesting words. So, Yvette, if you want to come to the mic, or any family and friends want to come to the mic and say something about the...
Do we have the last one? The Executive Director of Victory Center, Reverend Alderman Smith?
Yeah, just real quick. Just want to say thank you for the two years that I have had the pleasure of being your Executive Director, your registered nurse. It's been a pleasure. You know, we love you so much. Thank you all for your acknowledgement of our beautiful resident. And we love you, and we'll see you to celebrate on Sunday. So thank you so much.
Yes, my name is Rose Brooks. And I've been knowing Yula Lofton for 22 years now. I met her when, as a member of Covenant. And ever since I've been knowing Yula, she's been like a mother to me. And I've been like a daughter to her. But sometime I think she think she my mother... I mean, she my daughter, and I'm the mother. But I just want to say, it's a pleasure for anyone to turn 100 years old and to be able to know who they are and where they are. And I just want to say congratulations to Yula. Not only did I reach out to Mayor Thaddeus Jones, I reached out to the President of the United States. I reached out to the governor. Because anyone that turned 100, that's a milestone. Some of us can't make it past 17. And I just want to get Thaddeus. And when she turned 95, when Mayor Misher was here, I brought her up here for her 95th birthday. And I promised her the same thing when she turned 100. And I just want to thank John for all his input and all his caring attitude. And I think you all doing a tremendous job. And Thaddeus, you got my vote on that Democratic.
For the record, I did not tell her to say that. So listen, we have some special gifts for Yula. So I would invite the City Council to join me as we present Yula with her flowers. We know the Bible says, "We present you with your gifts while you're here," and honor you while you're here. So we want to honor you with the gifts that the City Council has guided for you. So if the council members can join me up front, Clerk and Treasurer, so we can take pictures. Any family members want to come up as well?
On behalf of both Pathway and Living, our Cores Center and our Executive Team, we would like to dispel the weapons of dozen proverbs to let you know that we're so honored to be celebrating a birthday and we believe in you and we want to thank you.
And everyone, let's give Yula a round of applause. Well, we're officially celebrating this Sunday at Victory Center. So everyone is in place. DJ is not doing all the things, but DJ. You guys are more than welcome to stay for the City Council, but if you'd like to leave, City Council, please, you can. Whatever, policemen and firemen taking you out there as well. To read Resolution 1 on the agenda? Motion made by Alderman Gardner, second by Alderman Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
A resolution expressing the City of Calumet City's recognition of Pastor Anthony Tyler and declaring December 13 as Pastor Anthony Tyler's Day in the City of Calumet City.
She got more to read, Marlene.
Whereas the City of Calumet City declares December 13 as Pastor Anthony Tyler Day in the City of Calumet City. Whereas Pastor Anthony Tyler was born in Chicago, Illinois, he attended Mendel High School in 1985, Hyde Park High School in 1987, and graduated from Rich East High School in Park Forest, Illinois in 1988. Whereas Pastor Anthony Tyler was called to ministry at the age of 17. Whereas Pastor Anthony Tyler attended Merrow Avenue Baptist Church, now known as Compassion Baptist Church, where he began his ministry experience. Whereas he received his license at Sweet Holy Spirit. Whereas Pastor Anthony Tyler received a certification of ordination on March 3, 1991, and was awarded an honorary Doctor of Divinity degree from the International Theological Institution of America in August 2003. Whereas Pastor Anthony Tyler, as Senior Pastor of Higher Ground Church, had the church officially joined coverage mid-America on September 23, 2002, as well as the Midwest Baptist Conference. Whereas Pastor Anthony Tyler, a resident of the City of Calumet City, was a listening ear for his neighbors and advocate for his community. Now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and the City Council of the City of Calumet City expresses their sincere gratitude and condolences to the family of Pastor Anthony Tyler.
Thank you, everyone. If the City Council again can join me up front in presenting the resolution, on behalf of Alderman Wilson, Alderman Tillman, would you present the resolution to the family? We join everyone up front.
On behalf of the City of Calumet City, we would like to present you this resolution of the Friends Society honoring the late Pastor Tyler.
On behalf of the Tyler family, we would like to say thank Calumet City. Thank you, Mayor Thaddeus Jones. Thank you, everyone, for your blessings, your prayers, everything that you have done. On behalf of the family, we feel your prayers, and that's why we're here today. Because of your prayers and the love that you have shown us. Oh my God, Pastor Tyler loved Calumet City. He loved working under the tutelage of Cheryl Tillman. She was the best boss he could ever have. She was so dedicated to the job, and she showed him everything that he needed to know. And he loved coming to work every single day. And I can just say thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, inspectional services and the whole city of Calumet City for blessing my husband. His legacy will live on only because of you guys. And I just say thank you. Thank you that we are still on the corner of Harding and Saginaw. And if you ever need a church home, you're always welcome. Higher Ground is still functioning. In Jesus' name, amen.
Marlene, did you want to introduce the family real quick?
So we have Madison Tyler, Mia Tyler, Makyla Tyler, Nyla Tyler, and Hayden Tyler. So right before Pastor passed, we were going to sign the adoption papers. And the lawyer called and said, "So what should we do?" And I said, "We're going to keep this ball going." And so we are the proud parent. I am the proud parents of Nyla and Hayden Tyler. So it takes a village to raise children, and you guys are part of the village. And if I ever call upon you, the police has been just so wonderful. We lost our dog, and they helped us find him. So I just, you know, it's the little big things in life. And I just want to say thank you, thank you, thank you for covering us, thank you for loving us, thank you for just praying for us. The prayers are the righteous avail of much. And I just believe your prayers are what is sustaining us right now. And I just say thank you again. God bless.
Thank you. Now, Marlene, you guys are more than welcome to stay for the City Council. But if you would like to leave at this moment before we start the meeting, you're more than welcome to. I know friends and family have come to see you tonight. So we will... We're going to start conducting the business of the people, but we want to thank you. So let's give her a round of applause again. And the family. All right, everyone, is it a motion to return back to the regular order of business? Motion made by Alderman Gardner?
Second.
Second by Alderman Williams. All in favor?
Aye.
Item 4 on the agenda is public comments. Is there anyone from the public who would like to comment on anything on the agenda? Is there anyone from the public who would like to comment on anything on the agenda? Thank you. The next item on the agenda are approval of minutes. We have... Minutes will be at the next agenda. Item 6 on the agenda are reports of standing committees. Alderman Gardner?
Nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Public safety, Alderman Williams?
Yes, Mayor, just briefly. I'm looking to call a public safety meeting in the next week, maybe no more than two weeks. Maybe I'll piggyback off of one of the scheduled committee to hold meetings, but I'll keep everyone informed. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Public utilities, Alderman Pad?
No committee will report today, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Health, Education, and Welfare, Alderman Wilson. She has no report. Permits and Licensing, Alderman Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. I will be calling a meeting of the Permits and Licensing Committee at the first available date, based on chambers availability. Time to be provided at a later date. Thank you.
Thank you. Ordinance and Resolutions, Alderman Tillman?
No report, Mayor, thank you.
Public Works, Alderman Navarrete?
Thank you, Mayor. Just briefly, I was going to defer to our city engineer just to briefly speak about the grass-cutting RFP that went out, just to ask residents to be patient. You know, we did find a contractor, and we'll be supplementing our public works with some grass-cutting. So, city engineer, if you take it away.
Thank you. Thank you, Alderman. Yes, the city undertook an extensive RFP process to elicit bids from a number of qualified lawn mowing companies, lawn maintenance, landscape companies. And we received a number of bids. We were happy to see that we were able to get somebody who understood the city and understood and had a clear identification of all the properties that need to be maintained. And so we are happy with that appointment. And we hope tonight that we will be able to have the recommendation here accepted by the council. And... What's that? Oh, okay. So that being said, thank you, Alderman.
He wasn't talking about the grass. He was just talking about...
Glad he wasn't talking about the grass.
Thanks, Jesse, for shouting that out in the meeting. Alderman Navarrete, conclude your report.
That's it, thank you.
Next item on the agenda are mayoral appointments. I'd like to ask the council, did you want to take these one at a time, or would you like to take them together?
I'd like to take them one at a time.
Thank you. First appointment is for Community Economic Development Director. We worked with the city council to choose and go through extensive process to interview appointments for community economic developer. The city council chose Donald Alessi. So tonight I will entertain the motion to appoint Donald Alessi to the position of community economic developer. Is there a motion?
So move, second.
Motion made by Alderman Patton, second by Alderman Smith. Roll call.
Tillman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Navarrete?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item is for deputy commissioner Jericho Thomas. He is our current deputy commissioner. His term is expired, so we have him up tonight for deputy commissioner. Is there a motion to approve Jericho Thomas as deputy commissioner?
So move.
Motion made by Alderman Tillman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Patton? Roll call?
I'm sorry. No problem.
I heard this side. Alderman Navarrete, sorry. So the record is clear, Alderman Tillman made the motion, Alderman Navarrete second the motion.
Gardner?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Navarrete?
Yes.
Tillman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Thank you. Next appointment for deputy commissioner is Zachary Quackenbush. Zachary is being appointed to the position of deputy commissioner. Is there a motion to approve the appointment?
So move.
Motion made by Alderman Williams, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Gardner. Roll call.
Smith?
Yes.
Navarrete?
Yes.
Tillman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Patton?
Epstein.
Thank you. The next appointment for deputy commissioner is Robbie Barby Frederickson for deputy commissioner. Is there a motion to approve the appointment?
So move.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Tillman, second by Alderman Patton. Roll call.
Navarrete?
Yes.
Tillman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thank you everyone. Last appointment is Joshua Brown for deputy commissioner of public works. Is there a motion to approve the appointment? Motion made by Alderman Gardner, I mean Alderman Patton, second by Alderman Gardner. Roll call.
Tillman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Navarrete?
Yes.
Thank you. Under this category, last one is approval of police and fire commissioner to a three-year term. As you know, Stevie Grant serves as the current chairman of the police and fire. Is there a motion to approve Stevie Grant as police and fire commissioner?
So move.
Second.
Made by Alderman Williams, second by Alderman Smith.
Yes.
Roll call.
Tillman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Patton?
No.
Smith?
Yes.
Navarrete?
Yes.
Thank you everyone. The appointments, next item is for library board appointments. We have Suzie here, we have Kid of Jones is currently second ward resident that serves on our ESDA. Shonda Williams for a three-year term for the library board and Terry Barnes, community activist who lives in the fourth ward. I would like to take these appointments together. So is there a motion to approve items A1 through 4?
Can we take 1 separately?
I'm sorry. A motion to take item 1 separately, A1 separately. Is there a motion to approve items A1?
So move.
Motion made by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Patton. Roll call.
Navarrete?
Yes.
Tillman?
Yes.
Williams?
Epstein.
Gardner?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
On items 8, A1, 2, 3 and 4, is there a motion to approve the appointment of items A2, 3 and 4?
So move.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman, motion made by Alderman Williams, second by Alderman Smith. Roll call.
Tillman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Patton?
No.
Smith?
Yes.
Navarrete?
No.
Thank you everyone, the motion passes 4 to 2. So let's congratulate all of the appointees who are here tonight and their families. We would invite you guys to speak, but we have a lot of city business to do. So we'd invite you at the next meeting where we have all of the employees come before the city council. But thank you, look forward to you guys serving in a role as deputy commissioners and library board members for the city of Calumet City. Congratulations. Next item, my city council reports. We'll go, we'll start with Alderman Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. First and foremost, I just want to remind the residents about the separate ward monthly meeting, town hall meeting. That meeting is every third Saturday at the Calumet City Public Safety Training Center from 10 a.m. to noon. Refreshments will be served at 24 State Street. Also, 79th Street BBQ, the restaurant that's going in the old Applebee's location will be opening on June, Saturday, June the 25th. More information on details to come out, that's their grand opening. They are hiring, if you're interested or you know anyone within Calumet City that's looking for work, please contact the office. The office number is 708-891-8197 or email at asmith@calumetcity.org. Also, Wilder Foods Indoor Farm, they are targeting their opening in July of this year. More information to come. And also, Napleton Lincoln is currently performing a renovation. As you probably can see, if you're driving down 159th Street, so more information to come on that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Exciting things Alderman, thank you. Alderman Patton, city council report?
Thank you, Mayor. Just one quick item tonight, Mayor. This Saturday, 9 o'clock a.m. at Our Lady of Knock Church will be our, the first of our summer coffee and conversations. So come out, meet your neighbors, ask any questions you have about me or what's going on in the city, we'll have coffee. Again, that's 9 o'clock Saturday morning in the parking lot of Our Lady of Knock Church. So if you drive in the driveway between the church building and the old school building, we'll be back there in the parking lot, thank you.
Thank you Alderman. Alderman Gardner?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council and Calumet City residents. Just wanted to remind you to continue to call my office with issues. Those of you that have contacted my office regarding speed bumps and the process of being installed, we're waiting on some more speed bumps. Last meeting's agenda, we purchased more speed bumps and we're just, at this point, we're waiting on them to get here. So if you need any other issues resolved in the ward, please continue to contact my office, Also, we will be starting conversations about ward cleanup. Maybe you have contacted the office asking about ward cleanup. So we're gonna try to coordinate something with the mayor's office and the rest of y'all to try to do something collectively as a city. And that's all I have. Oh, one more thing. We're gonna be starting back having some meetings, town hall meetings. So be on the lookout for that. That's all I got.
Thank you Alderman. Alderman Williams?
Thank you, Mayor. First, give a round of God makes all things possible. I want to thank the residents that came out to the fourth ward, third and fourth ward meeting. Concerns were heard and if they have not already been addressed, they will be addressed in the very near future. Juneteenth, that is the pre-Father's Day and Juneteenth celebration is June 18th at 12 p.m. at Sand Ridge Fitness Center at 600 Oglesby in Calumet City. There will be live DJs, chosen few DJs. There will be live solo artists, a few other DJs. So it's gonna be a good time, bring your tents, bring your barbecue grills and we're gonna celebrate in good faith. Also, the food box giveaway has reconvened. It is every Wednesday at 11 a.m. at 1651 Sibley Boulevard at the Hive Nutrition and Wellness. So it's 11 o'clock while supplies last. They're not, I don't get very many boxes delivered, but it's every Wednesday at 11 a.m. So if you know anyone in need or if yourself, you yourself are in need, please come by at 11 and take advantage. Speed bumps, they have been mostly, probably 99% installed in the fourth ward in the locations that they will go. I have gotten some concerns from certain areas about speed bumps, but we have to be considerate and taking, take that into consideration when we need our emergency services to respond to certain areas in a reasonable amount of time. So we cannot put them on every street. So please understand that and if your street did not get them this year, maybe we will consider them for next year. Thank you, Mayor, that's it.
Thank you Alderman. Alderman Tillman?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to let the residents know that the installation of speed bumps in the third ward begins Monday at select locations. Call my office if you want to get on the list once we get new speed bumps in, 708-891-8193. Also, I want to remind the residents that the first Monday of every month is our town hall meeting, myself and Alderman Williams. The next town hall meeting is June 6th at 6:30. The location is Downey Park, 300 Jeffrey. And last, but certainly not least, next week, we are gonna celebrate the birthday of Director Cheryl Tillman, who's in the back. I'm not 100% sure how old she's turning, but judging her looks, I'm gonna say it's 3030. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you Alderman. Alderman Navarrete?
Thank you, Mayor. Just briefly, want to touch on the construction that's going on on Burnham Avenue. We've had a couple incidents since construction started. I just want to remind people to please be careful driving down. There's certainly enough barricades and lights up. So just please, just be patient, let the project be completed. They're working on curbs now, the resurfacing should start shortly. But please, please drive slow, be aware of workers and also children crossing that street. And then finally, town hall, I want to apologize to those for the reschedule of the town hall that was supposed to be hosted yesterday. The reschedule will be June 6th and that will be at the VFW at 664 Hirsch, 6 p.m. Thank you to those who reached out to the office with the concerns that showed up. We'll be getting back to you shortly, that's all I have this evening, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you Alderman. I have two items. The city sticker program is gonna go on the road to the Victory Center, May 17th, from 4 p.m. to 6 p.m. Would also be at Victory Center, May 23rd, from 8 a.m. to 10 a.m. Garden House 1 and 2, May 18th, 4 p.m. to 6 p.m. And at Bernadine Manor, Tuesday, May 27th, from 4 p.m. to 6 p.m. I will send this to y'all, the Alderman. The next item, we have started a residential assistance program that's on the agenda for tonight. We are also partnering with CETA. CETA has worked with the city of Calumet City to help pay water bills. So when residents cannot pay their water bill, we have gotten, started to get checks back from CETA. To date, we've gotten seven checks back from CETA for people who qualify for the program for a total of $1,743.71. This check reimburses the city of Calumet City for everyone who applies for this program and it's our cooperation program, thanks to the Alderman, who have worked with CETA to make sure that we start this program. This program is additionally gonna have $500 for residents who qualify, who will apply from now until October. And the third part of the program will look at gas cards for Calumet City residents. You have to apply not only for this program to receive it, but it's an excellent program and partnership. And I just got word today that joining us with this partnership will be Pete's Grocery. They're gonna issue and give us gas, grocery cards for residents as well. So we want to thank the Alderman and thank Pete's, thank CETA, thank Val and the Community Economic Department for not only taking on this task and our goal is also to make sure we work with Calumet City Resources with this program as well. The next item I wanted to mention, we have, excuse me, sorry. We're intending to start our summer youth hiring program. I'd like to ask Alderman Gardner and Alderman Williams and Alderman Navarrete to start working on this program to have higher summer youth. The goal is to hire seven to 10 youth from each ward and also have this program be conducted in June and go through after Labor Day. So set up the requirements that we can hire from 16 to 21. But it's a way to get our, our youth working in the summer and also have them either working at public works or various other offices in the city. The Alderman can also have summer interns in this program to extend to the Alderman. But if you guys can report back at the next meeting so we can get this going, we'll have our IT team put the application up and so we can get the residents applying. So just want to thank the Alderman for that and that's the end of my report. Item 10 on the agenda are informational items to be accepted and placed on file. Does anyone have any questions about the items on the agenda, under informational items, 10A through E? If not, is there a motion to approve informational items 10A through E and place them on file?
So move.
Motion made by Alderman Tillman, second by Alderman Smith, all in favor?
Alright.
Next item, new business items, various items, A through 11. Are there any questions regarding item, new business items, A1 through 11?
Mayor, I had a quick question, I think you just ran through a lot of the points and thank you for bringing the program before us to help, be able to help residents with the CARES Act money. But items 8, 9 and 10, I was hoping that we could just defer to get maybe more established guidelines. I know that's been a work in progress and we had some great announcements with the partnership with Pete's and kind of just the forums. We had some good supplemental stuff, but it was a little dated. And just maybe getting that steering committee going, that committee established and maybe just put, you know, move it on to the next one if we could or maybe sooner.
Yeah, Alderman, our residents can't wait for assistance. We talked about this in the committee of the whole and Val Williams gave a presentation on how we're gonna run this program. So I would ask the Alderman to approve this tonight because residents can't wait for help. Residents are waiting for rent help, help with their water bills, they're helping, they're waiting for help with their groceries and we can't allow our residents to suffer. So I would ask to Alderman to approve this tonight.
We did discuss, and I previous me, that this would go before, that the council members remember this would go before a committee, that it's gonna be a committee forum, so...
I think it's a good program.
Alderman, there is a committee forum, as Val mentioned at our committee of the whole meeting. We have Val Williams here tonight. So pulling it off the agenda is gonna have our residents waiting who are paying their water bills. We have Val Williams here tonight, community economic development. She can answer any questions you have tonight, but I would ask the Alderman to approve it tonight and subject to Val providing you all the information. The Alderman request was to have Calumet City Resources do it. Calumet City Resources does not have the capacity to do it. We're using federal dollars and we have a limited capacity to use those in. So this program, and Val, if you want to come up or say about, you know, the federal dollars require us to capture all of the application information we have, which is done and sent to y'all, the Alderman. But this was explained at the committee of the whole meeting. So subject to, we can amend it Alderman and say subject to providing you all those documents, approve it, but I think we should move forward with this.
Mayor, quick question regarding the assistance, just about how much, I recall, about how much assistance is being proposed here in all, total, without going to each area?
How much?
How much assistance? How much assistance is being proposed?
So it'd be, the limit is five hundred dollars. The gas cards program will be issued by the Community Economic Development Department. For example, the average water bill that a resident requests assistance with, and remember, we're getting those dollars reimbursed. The at, the highest is four hundred and five dollars. The lowest is a hundred and seventeen dollars that we get reimbursed for. So the components of the residential assistance program will be water, rent, light gas, which we get reimbursed by CETA and ComEd, and those, and I believe that's it. So those are the items that, that are in the program for the residential assistance program. So the limit, to answer your question, Alderman, is five hundred dollars, and the max for the gas cards will be fi, fifty dollars.
This is five hundred per resident?
Yes.
And that includes all the items that you just?
Yes.
And the process is for the individuals to come into the Community Economic Department and provide certain documentation that they're in need of certain services, or sort of say.
Yeah. Val, can you please step up to the mic and?
I must have missed a meeting, that's, I'm, sorry.
The residential assistance program is up to five hundred dollars for those that qualify per household. The program is designed that they have to show proof of need, which means there has to be a delinquent gas bill, delinquent light bill, or maybe there's a need to buy medicine and so forth. When the check is issued, the check is issued to the company in need. It's never issued to the person at hand, unless it's a gas card involved. So they have to have a driver's license, they also have to have another document to show that they live there, but we never issue money directly to anyone. It's per household and based on need, and usually that's a delinquent bill or something that has to do with health.
Yeah. And also, the part of the program is that we have to have these requirements for?
Oh, oh, yeah. I did speak with the Resource Center, and they indicated that they were volunteers, and although they were very supportive of the effort, they did not have the capacity to facilitate. We have to keep spreadsheets, we have to keep documents, we have to keep accounting of who has applied. There's just a lot of reporting mechanism, so our office under the CED, under the Community Development Division, offered to facilitate in order to meet the criteria required. So we did offer, when the mayor mentioned that he wanted to proceed with this program, because we're familiar with grants and how they work, we offered to take on the task.
Is this, and forgive me, I guess I was out of town when y'all had this meeting. The rental part, is that separate from this, or is that?
It's encompassing in that.
Right. For instance, if a person is late on their rent and they're in their eviction or something of that nature, they can present those documents, and we can pay up to five hundred dollars on the rent, but it goes directly there. You know, I, I made the joke the other day, that when my kids used to ask me money because they needed to pay a bill, I said, "Send me the bill."
And Alderman should be aware too, that we may get ten people, we may get five hundred people, so we, we never know. This is to offer it to the residents, because we are restricted under federal law of what we can offer and do with our CARES money.
Is there, is there, I'm sorry to cut you off. Is there a time when it starts?
I believe that we, there was a discussion that this was first come, first served over a period of three months. Is this, is, this is between what, June 1st and October 1st, or June 1st, or, or something like that, but first come, first served, based on qualifying factors.
Okay.
And Val, do you mind sending the Alderman the application?
The resolution and the application.
Who's on the committee? We pledged to work with Cayman City Resources, so can you send them that as well?
Sure.
So if the Alderman wouldn't mind, we can take items A 1 through 7, and then take 8, 9, and 10 separately?
Briefly, Mayor, I just wanted to add in, if I could, about item, about, since we're talking about it, if I could?
Do you want to take it all together?
No, can I, can I ask more questioning?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Val.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Val. So I, just because again, I, again, I think it's a good program, I think, I certainly believe that people need the help. I think that, when we talked about it in the committee meeting, it was to get the committee together, and especially the Resource Center, who, who not so much run it through the Resource Center, but make sure that we had a committee together that included the Resource Center, because that is what the Resource Center, Cayman City Resource Center, you know, does here in Cayman City for, every Tuesday and Thursday for, you know, since St. Victor closed, so for fifteen years now. So they have the residents identified, you know, they go through the process, they have groceries there for the, for, for residents every Tuesday and Thursday. So I just, they want to be redundant, you know, if we can use, so in my conversations with the Resource Center, they mentioned that, you know, they, they do give out groceries, but they could use money for things that, since the SNAP program is through the Department of Agriculture, you know, folks can only use it for groceries, so what the Resource Center could use is toilet paper, cleaning products, shampoo, soap, things that, things that SNAP doesn't offer, because it's through the Department of Agriculture, and they don't, they only get food, they don't get those items, right? So that's the type of collaboration I was kind of looking for, instead of kind of jumping into giving out grocery cards, because it seems like, you know, they, they do groceries already, you know, they have the food depository, Greater Food Depository here at the Cayman City Resource Center. So just to kind of have that committee in place, and maybe provide, make sure we understand and provide, you know, resources that, that are needed, you know, like maybe toilet paper and?
Yeah, and Alderman?
And things like that. So I just wanted to get the committee together and just move it fast, I mean, I, I.
We do have a committee together, Alderman.
And who's on the committee right now, from the Resource Center?
Oh, no, I did talk to the Resource Center, I can call back. At the time, he, he indicated that, you know, his time was limited, but I, I can call him back and see if he would like to be a part of the committee, if that's the pleasure.
I mean, when I spoke with him, it was the day after, I think you, someone called. I think they thought it was Deanna or you, but they, they asked, you know, basically, can we, can they administer the program? And they said, "Well, we don't have the resources to administer the program, but we can certainly help you out, identify folks, how we do it." They already have the list of folks that they help out already, and, you know, what their needs are.
Oh, sure.
And then kind of collaborate with them in a committee to, to kind of maybe better roll out a, a program, and not to say that, you know. And then the gasoline card program, they also ran out through the church, Jesus Shepherd of Souls, and they had some issues with that. So again, maybe getting them on the committee to kind of talk about the issues they had, and make it a successful program, but I just, I don't see the need to rush it out, but if we can maybe incorporate them, talk, talk some of these things out. I know there was a framework given to us, but they were pretty dated documents from a program that we had in 2000, but, you know, I never received any kind of supplemental on the agenda today, or, you know, additional, so I understand it's a working.
Oh, sure.
And it's needed. I, I just, you know, would like to continue conversations about it immediately and kind of make sure it's.
Oh, sure. There's an application, it's, it's being vetted by legal for agreements, because before this money can be issued, those that receive it have to receive it by an agreement, you know, just like anything, when we get money, we have an agreement. So it might be in that, but it's very, you know, systematic, so to speak. So whatever the pleasure is, and I can definitely call them tomorrow, see if we can get something.
And listen, we cannot, Alderman, we cannot put a limit on people's hunger. People are, are suffering in our community, and so part of this program that we talked about, which we can put on the supplemental agenda, we did talk about providing Cayman City Resources additional grant. So if the Alderman wish, at the next city council meeting, we can have Cayman City Resources, we did mention them out, so we can have them on there, and Val has committed to working with them to do that. So on the supplement agenda, we can put a motion on there for Cayman City Resources to receive dollars as well.
Okay, and there's?
Mayor, just let me chime in for a second. With all due respect, I think this is a great program to Alderman Navarrete.
I, I as well, I think it's a good.
They do, I'm, the way I'm looking at it, first of all, it's in my ward, Resource Center, but I'm, I'm looking at it more of a community partnership aspect. They already have a network of people, and so for us, I mean, obviously, once the residents know that we have this program, in effect, they will reach out, there's no doubt about that. My, my point is, if we could just do a community oriented partnership, to show some togetherness in the community with, with entities, the organizations, that's already the focus. And maybe we could use their network for things that they don't need, and, you know, we give them what we have that they don't have, and vice versa.
Yeah, Alderman, on the next agenda, we can do that, and also have that agreement, and then work with them, because there's nothing stopping Cayman City Resources from referring the clients that they have for this as well.
Right, because I almost think, like you said, they have to, because we gotta have certain documentation, because these are federal dollars, right?
Right. We offered to facilitate, as far as identifying who qualifies, that can come from every, anyone, the Resource Center, any of you, however you want to market it. Our job is to facilitate the process. We just wanted to make sure that we kept active records of how the money was being spent, but how it comes about, who's identified, we can vet after you send us whomever you want, but surely, I'll call them.
And I agree with it. It's just, again, you know, every Tuesday and Thursday, residents can get groceries at the Resource Center. So to, to, to give out grocery cards now, maybe that's not the right thing to do, maybe we should give out, you know, toilet paper and soap and.
Well, Alderman, everybody doesn't go to the Cayman City Resource Center, so putting a limit is not gonna tell people, so we, we're gonna work with them, so how about?
Saying people need help, that, that's where they can go, Tuesday, Thursday.
We understand that.
Wednesday and Sunday, meals at St. Andrews, I mean, there's, there's things in our community that are active for people who need it right now.
Yeah, we understand that, Alderman. So Alderman Gardner, are you okay with, at the next meeting, we'll have the Cayman City Resources?
If we can, if we can amend the reading as it says, yes, I'm fine.
So can you make a motion to amend the, amend number?
I would like to make a motion to defer 8, 9, and 10 to?
I'd like to?
To, to, to another council meeting, to the next council meeting.
Alderman, your motion is out of order. Is there a motion to approve?
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Alderman, your motion is out of order.
There's a motion on the floor, attorney, correct? Attorney Samuelson?
Yeah, call the motion.
Attorney Samuelson, is there a question, is there a motion on the floor?
Call the motion, please.
Excuse me, you said what?
Excuse me, Attorney Samuelson, is there a motion on the floor?
Mayor, which, sorry.
His motion, his motion was to?
To defer items 8, 9, and 10 to the next, to the next city council meeting?
How about, we got, schedule the meetings right here, next Tuesday, Thursday, Tuesday. Let's just piggyback off the Tuesday meeting and take care of it Tuesday, so that the residents don't have to wait. Let's try to get everything that we need to get done, everything, yeah, all of the agreements, let's try to get it done Tuesday.
Yeah. Rather than wait. You know, Alderman, President waiting to Tuesday, it seems like we just talked about it right now, is your issue, item number nine, you don't want us to use the funds for local grocery stores, like, why, why delay it? Why not just vote on it?
So for the record, it was second for discussion. There's a motion made by Alderman Navarrete, second by Alderman Patton, we're under discussion under items 8, 9, and 10. Alderman Tillman?
So I'm trying to understand exactly why we're delaying it, like, when I would just talk about it and vet it out now. If your issue is number nine, you know, with the grocery stores, you know, maybe we remove nine, but, you know, item number eight, you know, what's the objection? Like, again, I think it's the, to talk to the committee, committees in town, or persons in town, that are dealing with our homeless and are struggling already, and just see what their recommendations are. You know, like I said, the Jesus Shepherd of Souls, our largest parish in town, has tried to issue a program with gas cards, and they've ran into a lot of issues with it. One, not so much interest in it, two, that they had just a lot of repeat customers, and basically they were just paying, people were just coming and taking advantage of having their gas paid every week, or every two weeks, or whatever it was. So I mean, they have experience trying to unroll, unroll out a program like this, and again, with the Resource Center, I think, you know, just talking briefly with them for thirty minutes, you know, they were, they were saying that, you know, food isn't a problem, they can, they can get food from the Greater Food Depository, or they have those relationships with food, but the issue then is, you know, toilet paper, soap, you know, they, they understand the needs, I guess, of already who's, who's asking for help in our, in our community. To have that committee, just have them talk, brainstorm a little bit, button up the, the program, and then roll it out. I, I mean, it's not like I'm asking for this to get deferred months, you know, let's, let's, let's just have that committee, they're the ones who have been doing it in, in, in our community for, like I said, fourteen years now, so I think they have a good relationship with, with the folks that need the help. And again, I would like to hear more about, you know, what they, what they think, you know, what they think should, is needed, right? Some, somehow, some kind of outreach, right? I mean, so I think that's, that's, that's what I have issue with with nine and 10, I guess.
Alderman, it is distasteful for you to say that residents can wait and go after the people who are in need. We discussed this in committee meeting, and for you to bring this up, we had ample opportunity to bring this up before the city council meeting, where we discussed the program, where Val Williams brought it, that our residents have to wait. This is federal money that was given to the city for us to provide this type of assistance to our residents.
I understand.
So I, I, I understand what you're saying, Alderman.
I mean, I would like to see the minutes, because I, I thought that, that the recommendation of the, then was to get this committee together as quickly as possible, and vet, and vet their recommendations.
Okay.
You mentioned that we have the committee in order, but yet, no one, no one knows who's on the committee.
You want to go to a vote. So there's a motion and a second to table items 8, 9, and 10. I would encourage the Alderman to vote against this. Madam clerk, please call the roll for items 8, 9, and 10.
What is, what is, what is the motion?
The motion? Alderman, restate your motion, please.
The motion is to defer items 8, 9, and 10 to Tuesday's meeting, to get the committee together and just bounce ideas off them, button up the, once all this is buttoned up with the forums, maybe Val have the forums together, we can go through the forums formally, right? We haven't seen the forums yet. Just have it all buttoned up Tuesday.
There's a motion and a second. Madam clerk, please call the roll.
Navarrete?
Yes.
Tillman?
No.
Williams?
No.
Gardner?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Smith?
No.
It's tied, and the mayor votes no. Items 8, 9, and 10 are approved. Residents can apply, we can talk to?
I don't, I don't.
No, I'm sorry. We gotta vote defeated, I'm sorry. Yeah, so there's a motion to approve items?
We have to 1 through 7 first, I assume.
Yeah. The items on the agenda of the new business, item A 1 through 11. Is there a motion to approve?
1 through 7.
1 through 11, I'm sorry.
What's the motion?
The motion to approve new business items A, uh, 1 through 11.
So moved.
Motion made by Alderman Smith, second.
Second.
Second by Alderman Tillman. Roll call.
Navarrete?
I apologize, Mayor. I'm fine with 1 through 7. I should have asked for those separate, I apologize.
There's a motion on the floor, Alderman, you need to vote yes or no?
No.
Use your vote.
My, my vote is no, but I really only have issue with 8, 9, and 10, but, yeah, no.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear, I'm.
His vote is no.
Okay.
No.
Tillman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Patton?
No.
Smith?
Yes.
Thank you for the opportunity to discuss.
Thank you. Items C are resolutions. We took up items 1 and 3, items, is there a motion to approve items 2 and 4 on the agenda? Resolutions?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Williams, second by Alderman Smith. Roll call.
I'm sorry, that was Williams and.
Smith.
Tillman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Patton? Smith?
Yes.
Navarrete?
Yes.
D of Financial Matters, 1 through? Twenty-five. Are there any questions about items D 1 through 25? If not, is there a motion to approve items D 1 through 25?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Gardner, second by Alderman Smith. Roll call.
Smith?
Yes.
Navarrete?
Yes.
Yes.
Tillman.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Gardner.
Yes.
Patton.
For the record, Alderman Patton is out of the room at seven twenty-eight PM. We are on unfinished business, we'll start on this side, Alderman Everett.
I just want to appreciate the conversation today from everyone, the opportunity to speak, and then Val, I know we talk a lot, so, give me, get the details as soon as you can, please, about the program, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Tillman?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to let the residents know that there is a resolution passed in honor of the late Pastor Kyle's, and on this Saturday at noon, on the corner of Muskegon and Sibley, there will be a presentation, because the resolution renamed the street after the late Pastor Kyle's, so we invite everybody out. Again, that's, it's Saturday at noon, May fourteenth, on the corner of Muskegon and Sibley. That's all, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Williams?
Thank you, Mayor. Just let the residents know, if you have any issues, cares, concerns, please give me a call, seven oh eight, eight nine one, eight one nine four, or seven oh eight, two one two, two two four zero. Thank you, that's it.
Thank you. Alderman Gardner?
Nothing further tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Patton?
Thank you, Mayor, a couple items. First off, I'd like to once again state, you know, with the, the upcoming meeting schedule that we, before us tonight, as I've, as I've stated previously, separate, at least a couple of these meetings, I will not be able to be here in person, which I have stated previously. I would just like to remind the mayor, my colleagues, the IT department, of my prior request to be allowed to participate in these meetings remotely, as has been accommodated for several of my colleagues over the last two years. Because I would like to participate in these meetings, unfortunately, I cannot be here in person. So I hope that that accommodation is, is made, afforded to myself, and just briefly, I'd like to, to speak to the vote that took place a few minutes ago. You know, I am certainly in favor of any program that we can put in place that helps ease the burden on our residents. However, our job here is to be good stewards of taxpayers' money. This is a, this is, on its face, a very good program, and something that I think could be very beneficial to our residents. However, it was just brought to us a few days ago, we haven't had the opportunity to get some of the questions answered that Alderman Everett has brought up, and I think it would, it would have been inappropriate for me to have voted yes on this without having some of those questions answered. I think this issue is not an issue that just came up this week, so for anybody to use this as an attack against anybody else and saying we're, we're deferring help to residents in a time of need, this is not a need that just came up. This council has been sitting here for over a year now, and this is an issue that just brought, was just brought before us, and a solution that was just brought before us a few days ago. Doesn't have to be rushed through to get it done. We should be able to talk about it and, and get, you know, get things worked out. So I think, you know, my vote no was only because I think we should have been able to push it off to Tuesday to be able to have further conversation about it, to get the questions answered, to make sure that we're doing our job as good stewards of the taxpayer's dollars. Thank you.
We are here to serve the residents. Point blank. Suggesting that any of us are not good stewards of any taxpayer dollars, that the federal government has given us and given us a directive to help our residents, is not the right thing to do. Residents are clamoring for help, they in here every day asking for help, and we will do that. No one in this room is not good stewards of the public's dollars. But we have to make sure that when we have programs together, any rancor that comes about, about a residential program that we discussed two months ago in two committees, should get a yes vote, and I want to thank everyone for their participation, and also thank everyone for listening to what we have to do for our residents. Our greater good is make sure that we serve our residents, and we will continue to do that. So there being no further business to come before the city council.
Excuse me, Mayor, I didn't, I didn't have a.
You don't get a turn tonight.
Mayor, I didn't have an opportunity.
I'm sorry, I take all that back, Alderman.
That's okay. Take it back, though.
Sorry, recognize, Alderman Smith, sorry.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Just want to remind the residents about the upcoming monthly seven quart meetings, those meetings are every third Saturday, with the next meeting on Saturday, the, June the twenty-first, from ten AM to twelve PM, noon, refreshments will be served. Also, want to remind the residents to come out to the Seventy-Ninth Street BBQ Restaurant opening at the old Applebee's location. That date is set for June the twenty-fifth, which is also a Saturday. And also, residents who are interested in the Resident Assistance Program that recently passed, please contact the Seventh Ward office, if you're in the Seventh Ward, at seven oh eight, eight nine one, eighty-one ninety-seven, or asmith@caymancity.org, and our office will work with you to get assistance. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman.